Counsel, this evening before we convene in a regular meeting, we do have a public hearing scheduled. We have a public hearing scheduled for the purpose of discussion of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2021. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. Having announced at the public forum, I will call the public forum to gather. By show of hand, is there anyone here this evening that wishes to appear in public forum? The public hearing in regards to the budget ordinance. On the first call, no one indicated that they were here to comment in regards to ordinance, the budget ordinance. Second call, is there anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel in regards to the budget ordinance? On second call, no one appeared to say so. On third and final call, by show of hand, is there anyone here that would like to address the budget ordinance this evening? On third and final call, no one indicated that they wish to speak in regards to the Greer budget ordinance fiscal year 2021. With no one to speak this evening, I call the public hearing to a close. With that, counsel, we'll move to our regular call, the city council meeting. This is the meeting that is called and convened on June 23, 2020, having called the meeting to order. I'm going to ask Councilmember Jay Airwood, if he would please, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance and then an invocation for counsel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
If the council would indulge me one second before I have a prayer for us, and this is all, it's all related. You know, there's always crazy stuff that goes on in this world. And there's one way to deal with it. A few weeks ago, we lost a very good man in the community who lived by what his creator told him to do, and that was love one another. And Travis Perry is the man that we lost, and he set a fine example for all of us as to how we need to treat one another, no matter what the conditions are. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, you have told us to love one another. You didn't say, you did not say if the conditions were right. You said love one another. I pray that our council will always do that. You have continued to bless our city. You've continued to bless our residents, and you're always there. No matter when we don't love one another, you're there, and I thank you. As we go through this evening, doing the business, doing your business for your city, let us do and say what is pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' holy name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I got our public hearing, the public forum mixed up a time or two, but we have gotten to the public forum now in our meeting. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
Yes, sir.
With that, then, we will move to the minutes of the council meeting from June 9, 2020. Counsel, do you hear a motion to receive said minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Have the motion in a second. Any items to note for the clerk? Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopford?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Also, a meeting that was held on June 13, 2020. Any outstanding motions, they be received?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any items to note for the clerk in regard to that meeting? Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopford?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Council departmental reports are contained in your package. Any additional questions in regards to activity reports can be addressed to Department head or to Mr. Degrers. Ms. Howell joins us this evening for our financial update.
Good evening. I'm pleased to present the financials as of May 31, 2020. Starting out with the general fund, our year-to-date revenue is $26,292,000. Our year-to-date operational expenditures are $24,062,000, which is 8% under budget. If you look at the dashboards where we compare actuals to benchmarks, we have an overall positive variance of $2,913,000, and the cash balance in the general fund is $15,211,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $2266,000. The expenditures are $2,476,000, and the cash balance is $946,000 in the hospitality fund. Moving on to the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,049,000. The expenditures are $1,288,000, while the cash balance in the account is $1,396,000. And that's a brief overview, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions, comments? Ms. Oz. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a presentation this evening. We've got an update on the Greer golf course. Ben Watson, our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, and Steve Owens, our Communications Manager, join us this evening for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council for the opportunity to update you on the progress of our golf course. What we have here is the flow chart, so you can sort of see where the golf course fits into our department. It fits in next to the other programming divisions such as athletics, events, recreation and cultural arts. Those divisions, along with the golf course, report directly to me and ultimately to Ann, our Parks and Recreation Director. Here you can see the staff on site. Jim Young is our General Manager. He manages the grounds maintenance division, the pro shop division, carts division and pool division. Altogether, we have six full-time employees, five year-round part-time employees and 10 seasonal part-time employees. If you recall, back in February was the initial purchase of the Country Club. This was a bond expenditure for a little over 1.5 million. And shortly after, we had your council retreat on site and talked in great detail and great depth about some ideas and visions and things that we wanted to do out there. So I just wanted to update you on the status or the completion of some of those tasks. You can see the pictures illustrating the new carts that we have. That was obviously a big deal. It was time to replace our carts. The fertilization picture also, the course had suffered from a lack of fertilization over the past several years, and that was a big improvement for the course. Since then, of course, the city has officially taken ownership and operating the golf course as the City of Greer's municipal golf course, or Greer Golf. We're working towards, we already have a few tournaments scheduled, but getting back towards our full tournament schedule, the traditional programming, we've achieved that. We purchased some equipment that you approved last week with a reel grinder and a sand pro. We have established some additional tee boxes that are contained in the project that you approved last week, established an advisory ad hoc golf board. All initial things that at your retreat we identified that we wanted to do and we've been able to successfully complete. This page has a lot of information on it, but it's a list of completed tasks that we've paid for from the, or out of bond expenditures. They're grouped by category, so you have everything that we've done for the building kind of grouped together, for the course, they're grouped together, IT, maintenance and for the swimming pool. The sand in the traps, the assessment identified that as a big problem on the course, and we simply added sand. I know we talked about maybe doing a bunker renovation, which was, could be very expensive, but all we did is simply go out there, rake the bottoms of the bunkers and add sand, and this made a huge difference to the aesthetics and the playability of the course. Again, a before and after of painting upstairs. This is the main hallway as you enter the golf course at the main entrance. Painting on the exterior of the golf course, the railing on the building, the flag pole desperately needed, painting. From what I understand, the flag pole is the original flag pole from when the course was first opened in 1955, so a lot of people out there are very glad to see that we left it in its original state. Replacement of the irrigation pump and motor that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. This is the inside of the pump station or the pump room. And then also, we've awarded the sprigging for the grass on the fairways and the tee boxes, and this just sort of shows you, the grass in letter A is what we basically have now, which is common Bermuda. That's sort of what it looks like this time of year when we have not had a lot of weather that's conducive to growing. And then B, you can tell that grass is much more plush, dense and firm, and that's what we're getting ready to sprig and put on our tee boxes. And also, here's a picture of what a reel grinder and a bed knife sharpener looks like just in case you, anybody was curious and wanted to see after we approved it for purchase last week. We invested about $10,000 into our swimming pool, just in the motor and the pump room, getting it back up and running. There were a few big repairs to make in there, but we basically have a brand-new operation system in that building. People were excited about that. We sold out of memberships after we announced our opening date, when we could accurately forecast that. We went from 12 memberships to a maximum of 63 within one week, so we got to full capacity in less than seven days. This slide shows some estimated costs for things that we have not done yet, but that we would pay for out of the bond. We spoke about these at the retreat also, but some of those are cart path repair, parking lot, curbing, carpet upstairs and the pro shop, the sprigging for the front nine next year, improvements to the range potentially in the future, some small things like an ice machine, cart barn, refrigeration, above-ground fuel tanks. We've identified the total cost for all of these at the bottom also. We do have some things out there that we do not know the costs of right now. The cart path repairs really deals with out through the course, whereas we were talking about in the parking lot above, a master plan, we haven't really gotten a price on that. ADA upgrades and modifications, we're still sorting through that list. If we make any improvements to the driving range, and then also, there could be unknown or emergency repairs over the next couple of years. And I'll turn it over to Steve Owens, our Communications Manager for branding and marketing.
Thank you, Red. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Red and I dressed together so that transition would be seamless. Shortly after the city purchased the golf course property, we began working on a branding and marketing solution for the course and the facility. While Greer Country Club was well-known locally, it was missing an effective brand to make it a regional destination. Because visual and name marks are an important part of any brand, it quickly became evident that the course needed to be tied closely to the City of Greer while also being easy to remember, updated, colorful and fun, marketable beyond the city and have ties to the existing facility. So we gravitated toward an adaptation of the brand that has served the city well over the past two decades, the Swish G. The visual mark needed to be a simple and easy-to-remember name mark to accompany it. It may be difficult to find an avid golfer in America these days who isn't familiar with the name Topgolf. That's due to the simplicity and quality of the product. That model helped produce Greer Golf. Those elements came together to produce this logo. You probably have seen that a little bit locally. We've done a soft rollout. Note the fonts are identical to the current city mark as we attempt to seamlessly merge the facility into our Parks and Recreation inventory. We've done, as I mentioned, a soft rollout of this mark locally. We've had a very positive reaction to that. It will be an important part of marketing memberships, tee times, as well as advancing awareness across the upstate and beyond. Our short-term marketing goals are being implemented concurrently with the significant improvements that are now taking place at the facility and on the grounds. An interactive website is under construction under the domain greergolf.org, the suffix matching the cityofgreer's.org. The existing greecountryclub.com, familiar to many, will be redirected to the new greergolf.org site. You see that the website is currently under construction, but we think it will be an attractive and engaging site when it soon debuts. Among the interactive features will be online access to tee times, purchasing gift cards and merchandise. We certainly want to see this logo on some shirts, golf towels, et cetera. A course tour with drone footage and tips on how to play each hole to continue that interest, and we will use some of our technology from the Synergy Project to do a 360-degree photo tour of the entire site. We'll work with the golf course staff and the patrons to determine additional features for the site. An effective social media presence is crucial for any business these days, and that is already underway. We've grown Facebook followers over the past three months and currently have nearly 2,500 followers. As we capture more content, we'll be rolling out Twitter, Instagram and YouTube accounts to share even more news and events. We'll also give patrons one more way to interact with staff. Paid advertising is a great way to reach the public, but we should never overlook maintaining strong ties to the news media. We look forward to inviting writers, reporters, broadcasters to the course this summer for the opportunity to play around and share news about the grand reopening of the facility. As the quality of the facility improves, so will our marketing attempts beyond the upstate. Golfers are always looking for new challenges, and we have a new opportunity to expand our customer base to the Midlands, Charlotte and western North Carolina and into Georgia. Improvements in Greer Station, the addition of a downtown hotel and a quality golf course experience make for the perfect experience for couples and groups. Imagine a weekend package with great golf, downtown accommodations close to Greer City Park and shopping and dining experiences in Greer Station, a win-win for everybody. A strong marketing effort is designed to increase memberships as well as walk-up golfers. This ultimately is how we market the City of Greer and Greer Golf as a destination and ultimately how we see a return on investments in both. Greer Golf is one more piece of the exciting future being built in the City of Greer, and we hope through proper branding and marketing to share that future both locally and regionally. Mr. Watson and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor, Red, you said you have maximum memberships. Is that just pertaining to the pool?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How do you determine what the maximum is?
There's a number or a formula. It's typically 75 memberships, and that's based off of three or four-person family. I can't remember, but if you have more people obtain a membership with more children, then the number of memberships would go down. But it's around just under 300, I think, off the top of my head is the total number. Because we also have to take into effect, every golf membership is included with a pool membership also. So obviously, the golfers right now do not generate enough usage at the pool to where we were afforded the opportunity to sell the pool memberships, but we do have a number there, and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 300. I can get that for you.
How about the golf memberships? Are we seeing any trend with?
We've seen a net gain, Mr. Airwood, I think of around 15 or 20 since we purchased the golf course in February. Certainly had a lot of people asking about membership rates, asking if there's going to be different membership rates. I really think when we're able to advertise what we're going to do for junior golf, getting kids involved, which is a big part of what we're doing with tee boxes, a lot of golf courses do not have designated tee boxes for juniors like Tenon Under Golf. That means a lot to a family to know that they can go out there and just basically not pull a cart over in the middle of the fairway unless their son or daughter to get out and hit from there. So a lot of the improvements that we're doing, I think, are going to be appealing to families that have not had that opportunity at the course. So our goal, I think the total number of sponsorships that we think the course can handle is around 275 to 300, and I think we're at about 140 right now. So a long way to go, but certainly trending in the right direction.
I know that this is part of the recreation programming, but if you started to look at putting together a golf program for the kids in the city, because that's one of the things that really they need to make sure, expose folks that may not have enough kids.
Absolutely. We've already spoke with the First Tee of the upstate. We're in position to move forward with that. We were in position to move forward with it before COVID restrictions sort of set in, but the First Tee of the upstate, we're already on board with. Grow Golf Now is the other big one for junior sport or for youth golf. And in addition to that, part of Jim Young, our General Manager's responsibilities will be to sort of go out and recruit and develop youth golf outside of sort of the bigger clinics like the First Tee.
Greer High still going to be able to use the course as their home course?
As far as I know, we haven't been contacted by them, but as far as I know, Greer High School, we have been reached out to by Greenville Technical or Greer Middle College by their golf team, and I think that there is a homeschool co-op or group that's reached out to us to use it in the fall as well for their girls' golf.
So if you have a family that lives in the city limits and they want to go up there, they don't have a membership, part of them want to play golf, part of them want to use the pool, how do you treat that?
They can play golf as provided that they can get a tee time in advance. To use the pool, you will need to be with a member, and you'll pay a daily guest fee
Brian, I sent you the list the other day of the South Carolina Junior Amateur, and I told you I noticed there were no players from Greer.
Right.
On that list, there were 100 amateurs that qualified in junior golf, and I was shocked that none of them were from here, and I'd love for us to set a lofty goal to make sure that these programs that we put in place for the juniors that Jay was talking about, that we start setting goals to be competitive on the state level. I'd really like to see Greer represented because we have a lot of talented golfers here. I just don't know that we've got them engaged in real good programming and setting these lofty goals to get them to the next level. I think that would be.
I forwarded that to our General Manager. I'm not sure if each player, and you may know, claims a home course or if that's their home city, but we would certainly, if there's an opportunity for players to claim a home course when they enter these tournaments, we would love to really figure out that avenue and engage in that and, like you said, produce golfers that are not only playing at that level, but any level at all.
Questions of either Mr. Watson or Mr. Owens? Gentlemen, we thank you for your update. Thank you for your time as well. Mr. Degrers, we'll move to the administrative report, sir.
Thank you, sir. As we can see downtown, we are in the final stages of our Synergy Project, our streetscape project in downtown Greer. We're at that phase where the, all of the paving has been completed. There'll be some quality control that we'll have to come back in and do some touch-up work and some rework in a couple of areas, but that's part of that process. We're looking forward and moving forward toward the ribbon cutting and the dedication of that project. As a reminder, that is scheduled for July 12. That is a Sunday evening, but we will be inviting our downtown business owners and merchants to come in and join us. As we've indicated before, we had certainly hoped that to be a much larger community celebration, but circumstances require that we try to keep that number a little smaller. But we're getting great response to our invitations to that event, and we look forward to having you join us on that evening, July 12. Again, we'll do an official ribbon cutting and a dedication for that project on that evening. While we are, we're scheduled, on schedule and are scheduled to have substantial completion by June 30, as our contract would have required, we will be continuing to do some punch list items, making sure cleanup and all of that is completed, as well as installation of some wayfinding signage and those types of things. So all of that is in fabrication at this point, and it'll be installed as those are being made available to us in the coming weeks as well. So looking forward to those finishing touches being applied. You can also see downtown, they're starting to, the string lights are starting to work their way up the street now and giving a little more definition to how that's going to look, and the medallions we going into the intersections at both Victoria and Randall Street soon as well. So work continuing, but you can see how it's all going to finish out at this point. Our garage project as part of our synergy as well is moving forward, but if you happen to go by the site, you may be curious as to why you're not seeing activity at this point, and I want to make you aware of that. COVID-19 has lots of interaction with a lot of things that happen. We have a subcontractor on the site that is, their entire crew is, has been pulled off of the project. We were at a critical junction for that concrete work. They mobilized, were on site for one day. Three members of their team tested positive for COVID-19, and so we needed, they needed to remove their employees from that site as they were dealing with that. So we're expecting about a two-week delay at this point because we can't do the next phase of work until that is completed, but those are, those are the things that are happening. That's the reality of the world, and our contractor is working diligently to make sure that other critical juncture paths forward are still being met. Our prefabrication materials are in construction, and those things are all moving forward, but work on the site, you don't see that activity right now again as we move forward. Looking forward to getting that crew back out there as quick as we possibly can. The hotel site is continuing to move forward. Footers being installed in that project moving forward as well. So glad to see that activity. Had an opportunity to meet with Cotransco, which is our PEs for our project, also doing quality control management for us. In the original phase of Synergy, the work that we're now completing downtown, they are also working with us with Sausama Construction as we go into Phase Two. I anticipate that to be a very, very smooth transition. Will not require them to remobilize. Their crews will be, will remain on site with us, and so as we move from the central business district, you will see those crews now moving toward Main Street, Cannon Street, Jason Street, down to Arlington. And so all of that work is progressing as we would, as we would move forward on that. As we develop construction schedules on that phase, Phase Two of the project, we'll certainly be bringing that information forward as well, but trying to wrap up Phase One as we begin to move forward with Phase Two of that. As I mentioned, how we're being impacted on COVID-19 in some of our construction projects or one of our construction projects, be aware that we are continuing to respond as an organization as well. We are very, very proud of our Parks and Recreation Department and all of our departments as they've worked very, very hard to make sure that we're getting our facilities reopened, making sure that we are providing for social distancing, that we are providing for hand-wash stations, hand sanitizer stations, all of those things that we are encouraging folks who visit our facilities to participate in. We do have a couple of incidents that we're continuing to monitor very closely. We have not had any direct positive testing for any of our team members, but do be aware that we've had members of our team that we've needed to place on quarantine because they've become in immediate contact with folks who have been diagnosed, and so as a result of that, we're following the CDC guidelines. And so as a, as a result of that, we're following the CDC guidelines and providing for that quarantine. So far, we've been able to provide work from home opportunities for employees that have been impacted by that. But there's, there's more exposures that are, that are being diagnosed out there, and as a result, we know that we, we may be challenged a bit as it may get closer to us in our own workforce. So I just want you to be aware that we have contingency plans in place, and so we do know that in any of our departments, if we, if we have direct contact or indirect contact with positive results, we know through a protocol how we will proceed in addressing that moving forward. So just wanted you to be aware that we have those plans in place. Also, wanted to share with you that beginning tomorrow, I, I go on tour. I will be meeting with all of our employees over the next three days. We have onsite meetings in all of our departments. I have 13 of those meetings scheduled Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And so I'm looking forward to those opportunities to, to get in and meet with our employees, share with them information about our budget, some challenges that we have moving forward, as well as some great opportunities we have moving forward as well. I'll also, I've added to that schedule on Monday, I will be doing two additional Zoom meetings for our employees, and I'm providing that as an opportunity for any of our employees that would not prefer to meet in a group setting. They can do that on an individual basis through a, through a virtual meeting as well. And so 15 in total, 13 of those over the next three days and a couple the following Monday. But I always find those, I find those challenging because we get, we get really good questions from our employees about what we're doing and how we're doing what we're doing and what the impacts are to them. But what I find when I do those meetings every year is recognizing the rededication that our team always puts forward for us to achieve the mission, attaining the strategies and the outcomes that you've indicated we desire to do as a service provider to the citizens in our community. So I look forward to sharing the results of that with you at our next meeting as well. Those are a few things that I needed to share with you. I've got a couple topics in executive session to discuss with you as well, but those are on your agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And as usual, administrator is available for any follow-up questions or comments in regards to his report tonight. We'll move then to appointments, boards, and commissions. I think we have currently the board is in Fields District Three. That term expires 6/30/2020. Mr. Hopper, any updated in regards to action on the board as I include?
Actually, we're working on that. Nothing to bring forward this evening, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, sir. We will move then to items of old business. First item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 22-2020. As a, as a means of explanation here, this is coming back to us after some review and amendment. We have the option of taking a look at this this evening without additional information because neither one of our planners was able to join us this evening in regards to that. I will ask for advice from council as to how you would like to proceed.
I may share, you'll notice on the text changes is that we did amend that that indicates that one parking space for downtown residential units, three and greater. So one unit would not require a parking space, two units would not require a parking space, but three or more would require one parking space per unit. And a graph that needed to be removed with that language change that's there. If there's specifics to that, that you believe that that needs to be tweaked farther, we would request that perhaps we would hold that over until our planning staff could be with us. But if you do believe that this meets what your desire was for the changes, then it certainly would be appropriate to proceed with second reading at your discretion.
Counsel, I believe that to your decision. If you were comfortable with what you read and see, we can proceed. If you would prefer that Mr. McMahon join us, we will hold this item over.
I don't, I don't know that we discussed this, but in the, which says site development, and maybe this is, this is, maybe we should hold it over, but it, where it talks about the sidewalk, it may be required to be eight feet wide, and that's going to be determined by the planning and zoning administrator. Is that, is that proper? Is it, it's a, I mean, I don't know. When I, when I glanced at it last time, I thought, well, that's Planning and Zoning Commission coming in is like a DRD or something like that, but that's not how it reads.
We can certainly wait for more than a guess, but I would assume that sort of, we've got eight-foot sidewalks in some parts of the city now, that it may be such that replacing them would be such that you need to.
The language is intent is that we would prefer a minimum of eight-foot split sidewalks for passing, for pedestrians passing, but we absolutely recognize in a downtown district especially, that just isn't always achievable. We're going to be doing Phase Two down Main Street, and we can't install eight-foot wide sidewalks. There's going to be work on Cannon Street that we can't install eight-foot wide sidewalks. And so where there is the ability for that to be installed, the intent of this is to, that it would be required if it can be accommodated. If it cannot be accommodated, instead of having to take that as a variance back to the, to the commission, it allows staff to say, yes, it's evident that, that cannot be achieved and that is waived. It, its intent was to provide a shortcut for the applicant in, in their process versus having to go back to a published commission meeting.
In the case of the parking ordinance, would a variance to that be available through the Board of Zoning Appeals, or would that go to?
I'm trying to remember how that's set up. Mike, can you help me on that?
Any variance would go through the BCA.
So if it's a variance at all, it would go through them?
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right.
Mr. Hopper, why did you introduce this originally?
Brought to us by staff.
Yeah.
Being to be addressed. Didn't originate with me, but I made the motion.
Oh, it looked like, it says it was introduced by.
It was, he made the motion.
He made the motion. That's what happens. Remember that when you make the motion, it's always on. That's right, dude, but he owns that.
I want to speak to our lead.
What do you mean here? So when somebody comes saying, ah, you need to go, Mr. Hopper.
It's that quick on the draw without, so moved.
Yeah.
So it is.
Counsel, we, we seem to be at a point that I think there are some questions. I'm going to, I'm going to ask that, I have a motion to hold this over for next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counsel, we have the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2020. This is the Northland providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds of one or more in its series, tax exempt or taxable to fund various infrastructure projects, authorizing the city administrator to prescribe the full in detail of the bonds, providing for the payment of the bonds and the disposition of the proceedings of the bonds, providing for borrowing in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, providing for the disposition of property relevant, related to the bonds, providing authority for the city to reimburse itself for expenditures prior to the borrowing and other related matters. This requires action, and Mr. Seifert joins us for this second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2020. Any new or additional update, Mr. Seifert, in regards to, to this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The RFP for the advertisement of this bond closed today at noon. We had six applicants, and the, the lowest percentage on, of the RFP was provided by Truist with a 20-year term of 2.51%. And that's the one that we are recommending that we accept, and we'll be signing documents later this week.
Thank you. That comes as a recommendation from staff. Do I entertain a motion received?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. What was other than discussion or questions? Hearing, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Yes. We'll move to second and final reading of ordinance number 26-2020. This is our City of Greer Budget Ordinance, fiscal year 2021. It's an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, letting taxes in to provide for an effective date. Comes as a second reading. Mr. Seifert joins us to review ordinance number 2620 and any additional information that might be relevant to our discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have two small items to bring to your attention before we vote on this. After the meeting two weeks ago, the Recreation Department brought to our attention that they had provided some text changes that we needed to make in the comprehensive fee schedule. I provided this, or Susan provided this at your desk or at your table, as well as we have it on the screen. In the section related to recreation, there, we, the fees get into the multipurpose fields and the marking fees. So at the top of that sheet, at the top of the screen, that is highlighted in yellow are the items that were notified by Recreation that they were incorrect, and we have removed or made changes to the items in yellow. Again, there's just simply text changes. And the bottom half in green is what the yellow is changed to. So you see at the top, we have one-time only highlighted at one field per day under multipurpose fields. Down at the bottom, all you see is one field per day. So it's just some simple text changes in the comprehensive fee schedule. Also at your tables, we have provided a new copy of the Real Property Fund budget. This was brought to our attention, I think during the budget discussions last week, last meeting by Mr. Bettis. As we were preparing the budget and moving dollars between funds, we realized that the money coming from Prisma that was ultimately put into Fund 13, which is our Neighborhood Services Fund, was inadvertently left in the Fund 23, Real Property Fund. So on the second page, down at the very bottom, there's line item that ends in 37501. In your budgets from two weeks ago, there was an amount of 185,664 in that line item. We have removed that from revenue. And then on the fourth page, an identical amount on the, in the expenditure section and at the bottom of page two of three, that's the fourth page in your packet, line item ending in 60000 is an equivalent amount of 185,664 that we have also removed on that side. So that, the 185,664 was removed from both revenue and expenditures, having a zero net effect in that fund budget. Those are the two items that we need to bring to your attention before you have your discussion and vote.
Mr. Driggers, any follow-up in regards to?
No, sir. The corrections that Mr. Seifert is sharing with us have no impact on the bottom line of our budget. It doesn't change any of, of that comparative data from prior budget to current budget, and the bottom line is exactly the same. And, and there will be an item of implementation that I would like to, to talk with counsel about, but we've got that scheduled a little in executive session, but it has no, has no impact to the financial of the budget. Doesn't change the numbers.
Counsel, you've heard the amendments as forwarded to us by staff, overview as well from administrator in regards to where we are on the ordinance number 25-2020. Do I entertain a motion to receive? So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. For us to have it for discussion.
I don't intend to go into lengthy discussion like I found myself in last time about concrete paving and amending the budget. I just want to make sure that, that we're, that we as counsel are clear and staff has some direction that although we're not funding anything about a concrete paving program, that it is moving forward with, which would include comprehensive paving program guidelines, a, a study of paving with concrete where you may want to require it, where maybe we could reclaim some concrete roads, equipment, education about it, the whole, the whole nine yards, putting that, putting that together and possibly some pilot projects. So I, I just wanted to, if anybody had any questions, but that, that was my intent, and that's the way I thought we left it last meeting.
I think administration is here on that.
That is our understanding, and Mr. Grant.
Mr. Grant, would you like to share any ideas? We obviously aren't looking for a program at this point in time, but if you, if you have any thoughts in regards to that, would like to share that before we proceed with the vote? That's fine. If not, we'll press on here. Not to put you on the spot, but we're going to put you on the spot.
Well, Mr. Airwood's mentioned this before, and I've done some, not a lot of research, but since it's come up again, I'm going to be spending some more time in the coming weeks and months to, to fully vet out, you know, his, his ideas and suggestions. That's really all I got. So I'm aware of it, and we're working on it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Other?
Mr. Seifert, on the revenue side, how, I know we're going to continue to analyze this on a monthly basis, but how far do we think that we're going to be off right now on revenue based on just the impact from COVID? I mean, I was kind of looking at the commercial construction numbers, you know, in the departmental reports tonight, and they are, I mean, it's way off. I mean, I think they've done, I was looking at it earlier, I think it's $20 million year to date, and that number in 2018 was like 151 million. Last year it was 80, and, you know, we've only done a quarter of that so far this year. I think residential construction is, is, is halfway at this point to where it was last year, and the housing starts are still where they need to be on that side of things, but commercial construction seems to be way off. And I'm just, I'm just curious, is there's any other markers or any other things that we need to be concerned about moving forward and also just kind of how you're going to be tracking that?
Yes, sir. Well, the construction values that you're seeing coming out of the Building and Development Standards Department are only different year initially. They're on calendar year number, and then of course their budget's on fiscal year. So there's six months difference between what they report and what we report for revenue. So that does have an effect on what's reported in the finances. I am not fully versed on the activity coming out of that department. I do know the housing starts at this point are setting in record pace for this year. I do understand commercial construction as it is at this moment is lower than where we were maybe a year ago. We also know we have some large projects that are coming that will start to lift. There's no, on the commercial side. But looking at the building premises, you know, in our budget, looking at inspections in our budget, all of those numbers are in line or greater than budget right now. So we still have another month, and in some cases, two months to still collect revenue against that budget. So looking at the budget where we are today, we're in a very good position, and we'll continue to expect that to come in through June and as we approve revenue.
continue to expect that to come in through June and as we approve revenue from July back to June as a normal accounting practice under the accounting rules. Moving forward into next year, as we're, you know, we will continue to watch that, you know, closer as we move through the year to see what those revenues, all the construction revenues, how those translate into the permit revenue, business license revenue, inspection revenue. We'll be watching that very closely. Every month is not more than that.
Yeah, with business license, I think it's going to be difficult to track because you don't, obviously don't get those dollars coming in until the following spring, right? So I mean, we can only kind of anticipate what we expect. I mean, I don't, we don't do trend-based budgeting so much anymore, but it's, you know, we're, we do have to kind of anticipate a certain amount of revenue coming in from business license. And I, I just, do we have any way to project how much we think it's going to be off?
We've decreased, you're talking about for the current year or the proposed year?
What's coming?
For the upcoming year. Recall, we reduced it. We've actually scaled that back anticipating that there will be less, and so that we-
It was about 15, 25%.
Yeah, but, but, you know, that total number was about $933,000 that we scaled back anticipating reduction in revenue due to the slowdown in the economy as a result of COVID-19. That, that is the factor that we're seeing that is affecting, that we anticipate will affect. Now, the analysis part of that is what Susan and David did on a, they looked at those trends relative to what was happening in our restaurant sector, what was happening in our retail sector, what was happening in our industrial sector. And so they were breaking that apart and looking at that in, in different levels. So that's just relative to the business license piece. Remember, a large number of our business license payers, they, the largest number of those who pay a business license, the largest number of those pay the smallest part of our total collections of business license. So what we'll see is that about 80, 85% of all businesses that have a business license and pay a business license, that they contribute about 15 to 20% of our total collections. And so that's why we, we're not really anticipating a huge decrease, but we will have some decrease. We've just been in a, we are in a very fortunate situation, is that even with the decline of some businesses, other businesses have thrived. And so there will be some balance to that. Is it absolute? We don't believe so. And so we scaled that back between business license, permit issuance, plan reviews, inspections, right at just, just under a million dollars. And so it's that million that we've pulled back to give us that degree of at least comfort that we know there'll be some decline, but we don't think that it'll be catastrophic for us, that it's, that it's, and so that's, that's the way that this budget was prepared is anticipating that we would have some reduction in some revenue streams, but overall that we would still fare pretty well. And so several of the things that were requested in the budget, we had to put on hold at least for a year.
Well, and as the parking garage dilemma points out, there's two variables that you've got no control over and no way to anticipate is the actual effect on manpower with the virus.
Correct.
And then the supply chain for construction goods has been iffy for the last month and a half. So we've run through the pipeline of what they had in reserve, and now they're just now ramping up these factories for even concrete.
Right.
It's been in tight supply. So those two things.
Supply chain has been a, is indeed a big concern and is part of the recovery. Anything more specific to the methodology of looking at what those impacts could be?
As Mr. Driggers mentioned, we did look at specific industry sectors. If you want to get into methodology, we can. We did break it down by sector and then tried to extrapolate that into a, you know, the business license and all the other part of it. There's a whole, some line items were about 15%, somewhere about 25% where we reduced the budget for the upcoming year. And then obviously that's something we'll be watching very closely. We've, as bad as it has, we've been in worse situations. You know, 2007, it is, it was totally, you know, out of the blue, and COVID was out of the blue, but seems to have less of a financial impact at the moment, but it's something we're watching. And if we do start to see that decline, I will make a adjustment. I don't think we'll be reading the recommendations to you.
David, I guess I should ask Susan earlier, but I know that we feel like that the hospitality tax dollars, although we'll be, you know, we were trending over budget as far as revenue. How has that looked since March? Are we, I'm sure we saw a negative trend. Are we starting, did we, have we seen that flatten, or are we starting to see it pick up?
In the graphical display that we do each month, it did drop below the trend line. It has for the last two months, but the drop at this point is level. So it didn't drop any, I believe. So graphically, it dropped about $40,000, and then it was flat at the same level.
It looks worse graphically than it is actually.
What's the percentage? Yes, did we?
It's about 15%.
We dropped 15 now. Are we, are we flat now, or are we starting to see an incline?
It's relatively flat, but we are still in that, excuse me, at in that phase where the payments are being delayed. So until that passes at the end of July, those payments start coming in again. Analysis at this, at this point is not wholly accurate. So we will start to see that trend back up as those payments for the last three months start coming in.
But what we're seeing now is, it's not good news, but it's, it's-
It's not continuing to be bad news.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jay, if you look at it, I mean, in January is when it really falls off the board, and then it, and it's off again in February and March, but in April and May, it kind of normalizes. It almost gets right back to where it was last year.
And that, I think that's a pretty good indicator of our economy. I can't say about the bigger economy, but Greer's economy, I think that's a pretty good indicator. The good thing about construction, even if you have a project that's going along and then all of a sudden gets stopped because of supply chain, labor, whatever, generally they've already paid permit fees, business license fees, because that's all been calculated in and collected upfront, so.
Mr. Deaton, would you join us here at the podium for just a second? I know that you have done a good bit of research tracking this and have sent some of that information to some of the administration. I'm sure it's been shared with David, and I think you've got a pretty good feel for where we are, where we're trending. If you want to share some of that information, I think it'd be appreciated.
Sure, it'd be my pleasure. So I'll share one data point. We were able to track some data on restaurant activity, and we use a company called Buxton to chart cell phone pings. So everyone who has a cell phone, they enable their location access. It pings cell phone towers in already established geo-fenced areas. And the pings of the cell phone are a reliable predictor of foot traffic, which is a reliable predictor of restaurant activity. And so we were able to get some data about a comparison of 2019 to 2020 of foot traffic as it pertains to restaurant activity in Greer. The data said, as you can imagine, in 2020, the trend line was exceeding far above 2019. You get to March, when the trend line plummets to the bottom. And the trend line stays there from early March to about April the 16th, at which point the trend line bounces back up. And as of about the end of May, that trend line was at about the point of the 2019 number for restaurant activity. Again, we're, we're cloaked in a lot of uncertainty in terms of what will happen or what could happen, but at least with that data point, I think it suggests that we hit the bottom in mid-April and have been trending back towards, at a minimum, a 2019 baseline and perhaps beyond, depending upon how the, the world treats us over the next several months. In terms of industrial development, you know, I'm very encouraged. Obviously, again, uncertainty prevails, but we've got good prospects in the pipeline. We've got good projects that are pushing forward. We're, we have a pending announcement that should come out here in just the next few days to a couple of weeks, depending upon when the company will release it. A blue-chip Greer company that's expanding, adding another product line, really doing some, some great things. And I think that's a story that's carrying over and over again and again. Companies are finding a way to do great things, and, and folks are still looking to relocate. At the end of the day, we will always be the home of BMW. We will always be the home of the inland port and GSP International Airport. Those three assets, your leadership and the things that you provide us the opportunity to do, will, will carry the day.
We cover BMW, just a commercial activity, what you're seeing there. Just for the fall and Christmas season, probably.
Yeah, well, in terms of new prospect activity or simply just traffic?
A little of the other.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, new activity is, is not plugging along in terms of new commercial projects. There's a lot sort of in the initial stages of the pipeline that we're seeing. Certainly opportunities out there to turn new projects that I think will continue to develop in their own way. We spend a lot of time talking with our, our restaurateurs, our retail providers, and you can imagine, it's a, it's a message of perseverance and hanging on, as well as some, some hope at the end of the line. The great news is, to my knowledge, we've had no permanent closures as a result of the slowdown or enforced shutdowns for regulatory purposes, and I'm not hearing of any that are in the offing currently. So all very encouraging. We'll continue to plug ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Counsel, second and final reading of ordinance number 26-2020. Comments? Questions?
I had one on the, with the police department. I think we were looking at an overall budget increase this time of, I think it was either 18 or 19%. It was pretty substantial. I know we did the, was it the compensation study this past year? And I think we talked, just as a refresher, didn't we, don't those take, those changes take effect? Is it in January when we talked about that actually, that happens this year?
It is, it is budgeted for in, in this budget. Yes, sir.
And then the conversation I believe that we had last time was that we were going to come back together and, and review our financials at that time to make sure that we had the ability to absorb the increase.
And I'll have some additional information for you a little bit later, but yes, sir. That, that, we would anticipate that throughout this budget, as, as we did in other years where we've had financial downturns, we have to respond as immediately as any business would. We're, we're not in a position, we're not insulated from having to respond as circumstances occur. And I think we've demonstrated that over the years, is that if we have a downturn in our revenue streams, we have to immediately implement strategies for reductions to our expenditures. And we have the ability to do that, again, as any business would, but we also have some availability that council would ultimately decide outside of what we've already projected. If there are forces that cause other things to happen, that's when you have to make decisions of use of your reserves and those types of things.
Other?
But it is something that staff has really paid attention to, so it'll be, because you always have to.
It's, you just, you have to. Yes, sir.
Just make me feel that.
It's like to hear, right? Yes, sir.
Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing them, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance 27-2020, an ordinance amended chapter 18 of the Business License, Article II, Licensing Section 18 through 35, to clarify the requirements of providing proof of gross income. Comes as a second reading. No new or additional information, I don't assume in that regard. Entertained motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing them, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the approval of the grant application recommendations. This is the Greer Accommodations Tax Committee that comes to us to make recommendations of the reallocation of a portion of the state accommodations tax money from June 30th, 2019. Mr. Seifert joins us for that conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff met with the city's accommodations tax committee on June 11th. We were notified that the farmer's market declined their $5,000 grant that we brought to council and got approved earlier in the year. Since they have declined that grant, they have, we met with the committee to reallocate those funds, and the committee is recommending this evening that from the $5,000 that we had originally approved through the farmer's market that was declined to award $3,500 to the agricultural arts, and then the remaining $1,500 to be split equally, $500 each, to Foothills Philharmonic, the Greer Chamber of Commerce, and the Edge Skate School.
Comes as a recommendation from staff or from the, through staff from the Accommodations Tax Committee. Entertained motion received.
So moved.
Second. And as I have, floor is open for discussion or questions? Comments? Hearing them, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. First reading of ordinance 28-2020, approving a project agreement. Well, this is, this is coming to us for information and then-
You may choose to hold over, but this is entitled only, so you may want to go ahead and do it without coming back. Yes, sir.
Okay. First reading of ordinance number 28-2020. Mr. Reno Deaton joins us for approving a project agreement that the project home company authorizing the execution and delivery of additional documents and related material. Mr. Deaton?
Mayor, counsel, good evening. Thank you. Reno Deaton with the Greer Development Corporation. It is my honor to present for your consideration this ordinance tonight regarding Project Homecoming. I do want to take a moment to recognize many other hands and fingerprints that brings us to you tonight. Certainly Mayor Dan for all your work in generating the lead and helping to get it to the point where it is. City administration, Mr. Driggers, for the, the great job in terms of negotiating the package that ultimately will, will come before you in second reading. This is a great project. We talk a lot in grand terms about game changers and difference makers, but as we just spoke a moment ago, in, in a time of, of certain economic uncertainty, a project of this magnitude and this potential effect happening in our community is really just phenomenal. This project represents $32 million in new capital investment. It's a mixed-use project, project, including multifamily and restaurant in an awesome location here in our community that, again, will be a game changer.
Counsel, you have heard an overview of Project Homecoming. Does come to us entitled only. Entertained motion received.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Comments in regards to ordinance 28? Excuse me. Questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
First and final reading of Resolution 18-2020. This is a resolution certifying certain real property in the City of Greer's abandoned building site actions required.
Mayor Dan, if I could, relative to this request, I'd like to introduce Kurt Price with Namaste Fitness. Kurt and his organization is the, is the group requesting abandoned building resolution declaration for this property. He's happy to answer any questions you might have, present any information that might be pertinent.
Okay. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate your time tonight and taking this matter up. I don't know if you've received- I don't know if you've received the paperwork or have that in front of you. I hope I do. If not, I can briefly read this. My name is Kurt Price. My wife and I, my wife Tiffany Price, are owners of Namaste Loft Apartments and Namaste Fitness Studio right here across the park on Cannon Street. So we have the existing business at 120, 122 Cannon Street, Namaste Fitness Studios. We've recently purchased the abandoned lots 110, 112 and the vacant lot next to it on Cannon Street and would like to revitalize that abandoned building to bring additional business revenue to, to the city of Greer. And as such, I'd like to, or have position to the state with the intent to revitalize those buildings under the Revitalization Building Act for tax credits. So I just wanted to make sure I could get this property officially deemed abandoned so that this, I can follow the guidelines of meeting the revitalization act of an abandoned building. I have, as I said, submitted my notice of intent to the state. I already have received an acknowledgement letter from the state that they have acknowledged my intent to do this. Prior to understanding that I, I should have this resolution and certified officially abandoned, not knowing I needed to come to the council, I had approached the, the clerks up front and worked with Vicki Adams. She had pulled, I just said, can you confirm there have been no business retail or business revenue from these properties in the last 10 years or so? And I have received a letter from her that says your records, the city Greer business records, show that nothing has been revenue, business revenue or license issued on those properties since 2001. So, and these properties were condemned at purchase. So I guess my motion is to hopefully, if you guys have any questions, I'd entertain that, but I'd just like to hopefully get, get it on the record that these were in fact abandoned buildings. I'm new to this. I don't do this all the time, so hopefully I'm following good enough protocol.
I'm sorry, I was, I was reading. Mr. Price, there's, there's two storefronts on that building.
Yes, sir.
Is this platted as two properties or is this one building?
It was one purchase, but just two buildings and a vacant lot. There's a property 110, property 112, and there is no number on the vacant lot. There are tax, three separate individual tax map numbers, G021, 0002, 02,000, 1,900 and 1,800 respectively.
Okay, I see. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I just missed that.
Yep. And I've attached the plat, the plaque copies of those, which adjacent, so the vacant lot is adjacent to my property that, well, the existing property we had at 120 Cannon and then the building is at 122. So it's three parcels, one purchase, and we intend to renovate the, the two buildings.
Does that include all those buildings?
No, sir. That third building is under a different owner, who's not interested in selling right now.
Sure.
Counsel, you've heard the request of the petitioner or, or from the applicant. Actually, this is a resolution that certifies the real property as in the city of Greer and is considered an abandoned building. This is resolution number 18-2020. It requires one review of the resolution. Entertained a motion to receive. Submove. Second. Have a motion, second. Any further questions, Mr. Price? Any discussion in this regard? Mr. Price, as you, you are aware, we, we have waited for some time for redevelopment to occur in that area back there. It was one of the things that we considered when we built this building was whether or not we wanted to purchase all the way to the street and we felt like that was a wonderful opportunity back there for somebody to put their, their own brand on it and certainly you and your wife's business has, has done that on the corner by taking a building that was literally a shell and renovating it and has been very successful. We, we appreciate your vision as you move on down the street now and take these other properties and we'll look forward to similar treatment and we know that they'll, they'll have the same loving care applied to them that you did to that building and we will expect that the successful businesses will grow out of those as well too. So thank you for what you're doing over there. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have several items in executive session this evening. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to project homecoming. It's allowed by state statute, section 30-470A5. Also to discuss the personnel matter pertaining to the administration department is allowed by state statute, section 30-470A1. And then another personnel matter pertaining to all city departments is allowed by state statute, section 30-4-70A1.
Comes as a motion to hear a second. Second. Have a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we stand in executive session.